On March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, it is time to start our regularly scheduled meeting. All right. All right, we'll stand for some time, say your prayers, moment of silent laughter, you seem to think you use your time. At this time, we have Commissioner Shepard Lee's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Bestia Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Ike Owens. Vice Chairman Jay Wesley Raines.
Here.
Chairman Joshua Derrisaw.
Um, live and present, thank you very much. All right. So at this time, I'll make, um, two announcements. Number one, um, if you have a cell phone, most people do, go ahead and put it on silent or vibrate. Um, if there need to take a call, please step outside the door, away from the door. Um, sound travels in here pretty well. So, if we could, um, make sure our phones on silent or vibrating, if you need to take a call, step away from the two dober doors on each side of the room. Um, down towards one room or another, go downstairs because sound normally travels. The second announcement is that this is a, um, regular meeting, it's not a public hearing, meaning that comments are, um, questioning everything from the public would not be taken unless we're on a topic that needs, uh, expert opinion or experienced opinion, someone who's been doing the work and know the work one way or another, uh, while we're in discussion of a topic. So those are the sessions that we'll make in, um, see, or what have you. Uh, that, thank you very much. Um, at this time, do we have a motion to, for approval of today's agenda?
Oh.
Set.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve today's agenda. All right, all in favor, let me know by voice or eye.
Aye.
Do we have approval, um, community development block grant public hearing, February twenty-fifth, for the minutes?
So.
Set.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes from February twenty-fifth, public hearing. All in favor, let me know by voice or eye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Um, it is approved, aye. Approve our call meeting minutes from February twenty-seventh, do we have a motion?
Set.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve the minutes from the call meeting, February twenty-seventh. Um, in favor, let me know by voice or eye.
Aye.
Uh, it is approved. All right. Uh, approve our regular minute meetings from March fourth, do we have a motion? So.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we approve regular minute meetings from March fourth meeting. Um, in favor, let me know by voice or eye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. All right, at this time, we have a introduction, um, from Mr. McCarthy, the new CEO of Southwest Georgia United. All right.
Sir.
Could you please, um, state your name, um, and your position for the public? It'd be on the camera.
Yes, sir, I'm Jared McCarthy, the CEO with Southwest Georgia United. Uh, thank y'all very much for having me here today. Um, I, uh, just took the position a few months ago and, uh, wanted to make sure I introduce myself to everyone. Uh, I come from a local government background myself and, uh, the city, uh, is of course, uh, one of the leaders in serving, uh, the people of our area. I want to make sure I came here today and, uh, just reached out and made sure I, uh, established that personal mod as well, not just for the organization, but, uh, uh, with me, uh, as well. And, um, I, uh, got on the agenda with the pretense of, of just speaking about our, our organization for a couple of minutes. Uh, I, I do tend to get a little talkative, so, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you want to tell me any points, shorten up a little bit, I'd be happy to, so we, uh, I don't keep you too long. Uh, but just to tell you a little bit about myself as well, um, before I shift, uh, the, the focus more importantly to our organization. I'm originally from, uh, Macon County, uh, went to the University of Georgia, uh, for, uh, both my bachelors and graduate degree. Uh, came back home and, and served with the Regional Commission, uh, whose area included, uh, Chris County and the city of Cordill, uh, for fifteen years. Uh, did a lot of projects here in the area, uh, uh, I think from about oh-six to two thousand twelve, I have to look back, got the files to, to be exactly sure. Uh, but a lot of that was, uh, community development block grant projects and whatnot. And, uh, just really fell in love with the area and the people and, uh, was ecstatic at the chance to, to come back here and, and serve here. Uh, especially in the nonprofit sector, that, that's one that's, uh, I, I always thought would be a, uh, particularly impactful place to serve. Um, but, uh, if you don't mind, I did just want to kind of update everyone on our organization, what we're doing. Uh, I know that changes over time, uh, as well as the people in the room, uh, over time, uh, change a little bit. And, uh, just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of what we're doing and, uh, uh, would be happy for any follow-up conversations as to how we, uh, can work together on these things or anything additional, uh, we could do that might not be on our radar, uh, that city officials, uh, feel is important for the people. Uh, we essentially have, uh, four different main programs, uh, that together holistically serve people and, uh, essentially help, uh, establish some positive momentum in their lives. Uh, very different, uh, uh, facets of their lives. Uh, first of all, um, our community development, uh, financial institution, which is a fancy way of maybe saying, uh, our loan programs. Uh, uh, through those efforts, we accept credit risks, uh, beyond the tolerance of regular lenders, uh, to serve low-income people in communities, uh, lacking adequate access to borrowing. Uh, we do that statewide and a major focus there is, uh, creating jobs. Through our business loan program, which I will call just, uh, sort of a sub-program, uh, which is by far our largest, uh, we must create job opportunities in lower-income minority and other underserved, uh, communities. Uh, very proud of our efforts there. Uh, we also do, uh, home repair loans. Uh, those go up to, excuse, uh, I'm, excuse me, up to ten thousand dollars and, uh, can be structured to fit the needs of fixed income individuals, uh, including people with disabilities and elderly, of course. Uh, I think that's particularly important because, um, as I'm sure you know, being local government officials, you see a lot of, uh, abandoned houses and whatnot. And I think in a lot of cases, uh, people's maintenance just got away from them, uh, when they were having, uh, financial issues. So this helps people stay ahead of that and in long-term, uh, really keep their home. Uh, and, uh, we avoid these, uh, abandoned structures throughout the community, so I, I think those are very important. Uh, these loan per, these loan per, loan programs, see, by the way, are, uh, statewide. Uh, that does of course include, uh, uh, the city of Cordill. Uh, we also do micro loans for, uh, small businesses, uh, including startups. Uh, these are, uh, businesses are ten or less employees and can, uh, be as much as a fifty thousand dollar loan. Uh, these allow us, uh, to do, um, a few extra things for the smaller businesses. Uh, they're a bit more flexible in what we can do with them, uh, we can look at things like supplies, uh, furniture and fixtures, uh, minor renovations and debt refinances, those are things that we can't do under the, the larger loan. So there's a particular focus there on, uh, the smaller businesses. We, uh, through the, uh, two different types of business loans, we do provide technical assistance as well, uh, where we can, uh, help them improve their, uh, existing business plans. Uh, I believe, uh, South Georgia Technical College will help them oppose the plan. Uh, but if they come to us and they're not quite over the hump with what is fundable for a loan, we can help them get there. Uh, we can provide a little guidance and, uh, help them, uh, just evolve a little bit, uh, to get across the finish line. Uh, also, overall, uh, all programs combined, uh, of the loan programs as of two twenty-eight, uh, there are twenty-six business loans totaling six point one million that we went out. Uh, micro, uh, business loans totaling four hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty-six housing loans, uh, totaling two hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, it's a total of seventy-five loans with a volume of six point eight million that's out. And we have another, uh, two point four million, uh, available. But we are looking, uh, for additional funding, uh, we want to continue to do more. Uh, we, we always want to push forward, uh, because the need is there. And, uh, just on that note, if, um, anyone knows anyone looking to, uh, start a business in, in our area, uh, once they get their business plan and whatnot together, or we can even direct them to, uh, services, uh, to help put that business plan together, uh, please send them our way, uh, we really want to help, uh, impact the local economy here in, in the city of Cordill. Uh, next, our, uh, other major, another major program is our youth build. Uh, we serve youth, uh, sixteen to twenty-four, who are school dropouts or basic skills deficient and are members of disadvantaged populations. Uh, we help them prepare for high school diplomas, G D's, vocational school, uh, or college. Uh, we teach all the, uh, participants construction skills and also, uh, offer a flexible range of other occupations. Um, part of their training is they go to rehabilitate a home for the homeless or, uh, lower-income people in their, uh, community. So that's one of the things we're happy to do around here that has a, a double impact to the teaching and, uh, providing for someone. Uh, we help them with, uh, a lot of different things, uh, to be successful, uh, beyond job training, uh, with each accountability, uh, stress community service, uh, and help them prepare for things like employee, uh, interview, resume building, uh, completing job applications, financial literacy, uh, career assessment, uh, job placement assistance. And, uh, we guide them to, uh, to other services that we don't have, uh, that might help them, such as, uh, child care and, uh, subsidies. So our people really go out of their way to try to, to help, uh, people in whatever facet of their life, uh, they might need it, even if it's beyond our own services. Uh, we also provide call-up assistance after a program completion. And, uh, we're mostly funded, uh, through the Department of Labor for this program. Uh, we currently have thirty individuals on our waiting list despite not even having, uh, started recruiting, uh, this year. Uh, these are people that just kind of found us and we are targeting to serve, uh, sixty-plus people. Uh, this particular program right now serves Chris, Newly and Sumter County and we have a project site in, uh, Newton, Georgia, actually. Uh, but that is one I'm very proud of as well. I know there are a lot of barriers to, uh, uh, obtaining job skills and getting started in life, uh, professionally. Uh, very proud of that. Uh, we do have some needs, uh, the federal funds don't provide for. Uh, not asking the city for anything, but just if you know anyone that would, uh, perhaps like to donate to any of these, uh, food and water for our pantry, um, any mentoring activities for the participants, uh, personal items or, uh, sometimes, uh, clothing items. And, uh, the reason for some of these is some of, uh, some of our participants, participants are in fairly bad shape. Uh, some might even be homeless, uh, some, uh, don't eat regularly as they should. So anybody in the community that wants to help out with that, we're, we're certainly, uh, um, appreciative of that. And just wrapping it up with our, uh, last two that are a little more concise. Our asset management program, uh, is really our housing program. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty-one, uh, units that we're working with. Uh, usually ninety-eight percent of them are, are leased and occupied. Uh, the key percentage is natural turnover as people move out, uh, we go in and, uh, uh, provide repairs and whatnot to try to establish the quality of the home. And, uh, we get people right back in there. Uh, the waiting list, uh, has reached at least, uh, sixty households, uh, before being closed. And, uh, this is for the, uh, Chris and Newly area, uh, that we serve. So we have to shut down the waiting list at sixty households because, uh, after that, you don't want to, you know, really leave people on that, uh, they're going to get, uh, a housing unit opportunity with sixty families, uh, ahead of them in line. Uh, but we are seeking to further address that great need, uh, we'll begin construction soon on twenty-four units known as Christian Homes on, uh, Twenty-Fifth Avenue here in Cordill. Uh, very proud of that and the, the quality of those units. And then just finally, uh, we have a statewide, uh, housing counseling. Uh, this provides guidance and things such as, uh, mortgage assistance, foreclosure prevention, financial literacy, credit counseling, budgeting and home bar education. So that is, uh, a- as quickly as I, as I could do it, um, as I'm very proud of our staff and, uh, how well-rounded they are and all that they do. Uh, but one final thought, having come from local government myself, I, I know that there are certain, uh, challenges to serving the public. Uh, local government in particular was, uh, always difficult for us to go on the private property, uh, new projects of that nature. So if any way that we might be able to overcome those challenges, uh, fill those gaps in service, uh, please feel free to let me know. Uh, happy to sit down and talk about any way that, that we can evolve, uh, to be a, uh, stronger and stronger partner over time with the city, uh, very happy to do that. So thank you very much, uh, appreciate the opportunity and, uh, thank y'all for having me.
Yes, ma'am, sir, if there's any questions, please.
Oh, yes, sir. I, I babbled for so long, I figured y'all might be done with it at this point, but yes, sir, any questions, happy to do.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shepard.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I always want to know if there are any grants available to assist with home improvement in Cordill. So, um, you know, Southwest Georgia United have any program for able to assist low-income people with grant. A lot of people need to repay, they can't afford it. A lot of people can't afford it, you know, borrowing money.
Yes, ma'am.
You have any grants?
Uh, you're, you're completely right, um, a- as far as what we're able to do, uh, w- we only do the, um, the loans ourselves, but, uh, having been a, uh, in the grant writing business for fifteen years, I, I can give you a little background on, on what's out there. Uh, USDA has a weatherization program, I know, actually no, I'm sorry, I think that moved to Jufa now. Uh, USDA used to have it, I, I think Jufa has it now, uh, that helps people with, um, insulating their homes and whatnot and getting their, their, their power. I don't think they do, uh, C V units ship, um, are things that, uh, uh, do those larger, uh, repairs, but those are things that, um, often go through the local governments. Uh, I, I believe as a nonprofit, we could possibly apply for a ship, but I don't think we can for a C V. So there, there's probably a lot to talk about there as well as far as, uh, you know, combined strategy and whatnot. And, um, at the same time, if, if, whenever the city applies for one thing, uh, that might mean, uh, they can't apply for something else, or have eligibility and whatnot. I know the city has a lot of needs.
My question is.
Yes, ma'am.
Youth bill program recap housing. If an individual buys supplies, could youth bill possibly re-add a housing to a roof, you know?
Uh, yeah. Well, I know that, uh, well, yes, ma'am, uh, when they buy the materials, we do often, uh, go in and we provide the labor. Uh, I know that we do, we have to do a wall and we have to do other things. I haven't heard of a roofing project in particular, but, um, I, I would think that we could do that. I can, I can double check and make sure, but, um, I, I would, I would certainly think that falls in our purview. And, um, also, I, I, I follow the, the fact that you, uh, focus on roofing. I actually, uh, did a, uh, got a church project started in America at one point specifically just for roofs. And I said, there are a lot of houses that are going downhill because they lose the roof and then that affects everything underneath it. So that, that is a, a very important, um, uh, consideration. Uh, a- as far as us having the manpower to, uh, you know, we're talking about having sixty participants over, that's going to be over three years, over four counts. So we, we will have some people, but they're, they're rather spread out and a lot of their time is spent, uh, in the classroom and whatnot, so. Uh, you know, I'm happy to do anything we can, but, uh, there might be, uh, some sort of, you know, limit or, or, or labor force there. But I can look further into the funding opportunities as well, I'm happy to do that. I think the Jufa goes directly to the, uh, the homeowner. Uh, but the others have to go through a larger hand. So.
Just one more question. You talked about food and water and inventory programs that they have to close, where do they take these items and how would they, um?
Oh. Uh, thank you for asking that, um, we are located at, uh, one twenty-three, uh, Seventh Street. And, uh, it's, it's right up from, uh, the county office, actually. So we, we could just take them there, uh, if anybody wants to stop by, it's pretty convenient location, uh, right downtown.
And at any day, any time, would you get a hour or two?
Oh, uh, we are generally there, um, eight to five, uh, Monday to Friday. Uh, some of us get there a little early, some of us leave a little late, but, uh, that's, that's the, the established hours.
Any trouble, man, I can hear.
Uh, sometimes, the clothing is, is kind of as needed, but it, it would never hurt to have some in stock for when the next week rolls around.
Any more questions?
The youth bill program, is that getting, are you getting more participants in that or is it holding about city or?
Uh, yes, sir, we, um, I just started out with our next round of funding and, uh, we had, uh, thirty, uh, people already reach out and, uh, want to sign up. And, uh, that was before we started doing the recruiting, so we're aiming for more than sixty. I, I don't think we're going to have, uh, too much problem, uh, finding, uh, the, the number of participants, uh, that, that we're looking for there, but, um, uh, just if you don't mind me segueing just a little bit, uh, also in the, in the job placement, um, any input anybody might have as far as opportunities, uh, we're always looking for opportunities for job placement with the program as well.
Any more questions? Um, how long have you, um, taken on as the CEO there?
Uh, been there since, uh, December.
December. What are your goals for, and I'll give you a little background, uh, when I came in. I know Robert Cook first, get a little while in. Tried to work together on some things, it just didn't happen, um. And I had a few concerns about, um, the organization. So I guess my question is, um, what are your strategic goals for the organization specifically here in Cordill?
Yes, sir. We're here in Cordill, um, first off, this might sound like setting the bar a little low, um, but, uh, I, I told our board, my first phase is to learn the organization thoroughly and, and what we're doing right now, uh, before I start expanding the efforts and whatnot. Uh, I want to make sure I keep, uh, the ship running as it is, uh, before we, before, uh, I get to my bigger ambitions. Uh, I do have a number of things, uh, I've considered expanding this into, but, um, I would of course need to make sure I'm on the same page with my board for what we do. Uh, too many of those. Uh, I kind of mentioned one with the working on, uh, uh, private property though. Uh, that's one way I think that we could, uh, uh, possibly benefit the city, uh, places that the city can't access and whatnot. Uh, right now though, um, a few things we're looking to do is, uh, we are looking to expand our, uh, local portfolio. Uh, want to have a bigger impact on, uh, the local economy and what we could do for businesses, the number of businesses we can serve. Uh, the housing, um, as, uh, Miss Bestia, uh, mentioned, uh, anything we can do there to have a greater impact, especially on the, uh, the roofs of the area and whatnot. Uh, some of that might be accomplished though through us expanding our own, uh, housing availability. Uh, but I know too that people have, you know, their own homes and whatnot. Uh, I am happy too to provide, you know, any kind of input, I, I hesitate to put a formal word on it like consulting, but, uh, given my fifteen years of merit riding and whatnot, um, uh, I'm happy to work with all the different, uh, parties, the city, the county, uh, whoever and strategizing, uh, what we need to do, uh, so that we're, we're all down the same, we're all hitting the, uh, the biggest needs that there are. But also I'm, I'm open to input, um, I, I don't presume to come in and know everything, I know the, uh, you know, the city officials have been here, uh, well before I have. So what the city builds needs are, I'm happy to sit down and, and talk about that, see what we can do to incorporate that in our plan as well.
Okay, I'll reach out to you to arrange a meeting, uh, if you have some deeper questions. Um, last question, when you speak of youth build and you say you're wanting about sixty participants or maybe beyond that, what has the retention been a youth build? Um, because it's one thing to get kids through, or the young adults, I should say, but it's another thing to keep them in. Just to plug, um, I know you, um, talk about job, job placement, um, do you work with grant of I D A, I D C, um, on that level? That may be a plug for you because they have a lot of the industrial, um, jobs plugged in there, so you may be, um, a good resource to connect with as the jobs go in and out of their office.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, and, uh, we, we are con, uh, uh, connected with them and, uh, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce as well. Uh, and the Department of Labor, really anybody, uh, we can connect with, uh, a lot of times it's the, the networks, um, sometimes outside the formal networks too. Uh, this, I, I know as you, y'all, uh, probably know a, a good deal of, uh, industry and business in the area. Um, you know, we're happy to place in any way we can.
Yeah. I'd probably recommend you to grant because that's what you get paid for, um, to do that, um, so. Um, but the retention on youth build, do you have an idea of what that looks like?
You know, I, I honestly don't know what our recent retention has been. Uh, I know we operated one year without a grant and that, uh, affected our numbers some. Uh, but I, I can go back and find the last full year for you.
Thank you. Have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, rekind.
Yes, sir. All right. At this time, we have a speak, uh, speaker appearance, Mr. Devonte Hunt, to speak our concerns under the role of constituent seat of the city of Cordill. Mr. Hunt, um, I know you know the rules, but I'll say it again, so there'll be, um, no confusion. So once you come and appro- approach the podium, um, please introduce yourself and your address and you'll have five minutes, um, five minutes to, um, to give your, um, your, uh, speech, just to let me read, see. So once you, uh, announce your name, uh, please, uh, go ahead and, uh, start, and I'll start in time.
My name is Devonte Hunt and I'm a resident of Ward Two. Uh, real briefly, I just wanted to come back at the, uh, direction of Commissioner Shepard with, uh, uh, the petition. We have four hundred and eighty-nine signatures online and another sixty-plus on paper, uh, and a great deal that comes specifically from Ward One. Uh, so I, I guess differently from last week, I'm not here representing myself, I'm actually here, I had the request of some five hundred or so people, uh, which is interesting because, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have more supporters on this petition than you have for your, uh, previous election win, uh, each one of you and your individual wards, uh, so, uh, I guess that's, I'm expecting to get a, a motion to change the meeting back to five thirty today. Uh, and I was also asked about verbiage for the, uh, ordinance to put, uh, verbiage in our charter regarding the removal and suspension of commissioners. I've done you all two favors. Uh, I typed out one specifically for Cordill and I also attached one, uh, from a, another city, uh, which, which we usually do here, uh, as our God and host. So, uh, I can leave this with you all, or I'll give it to you, Mr. Chairman, and these signatures. Uh, so yeah, I, I guess that's why I'm here again, to ask for those two motions to add that verbiage. I'm sure you all will have to look at this, uh, city manager, the city attorney, to convey this to the city of Cordill. But as far as these signatures, I think the people have spoken, uh, which it was kind of disrespectful to have us to go through this to get a petition when there was no petition to change the meeting to nine AM. Uh, the November seventh meeting that was held to approve the R and D law contract was done completely wrong and it was pointed out in the meeting. Uh, we have a police force that doesn't believe in protecting and service, serving under all conditions, but some. And so, really, this is just the first step. Uh, the first thing that the constituents need is for this meeting to be moved to five thirty in the evening. Uh, and I know that some of you, uh, spoke about the workforce here and, and their complaints as far as, uh, having to stay late. Uh, but every single job application that I've, uh, filled out, every contract that I've signed, the last sentence of every single one of those documents says, and other duties as required. Uh, so, I mean, that's just that, it's a part of the. Uh so, I mean, that's just that, it's a part of the job. Or there are other ideas that I have that we could possibly implement to alleviate that. Addition of two hours on the back end for those who are actually uh required to come to these meetings, but. I think most of the people who are here are in leadership, so uh I could be wrong, I'm not sure. But yeah, that's, that's it for for now.
Are you stopping right there? Any questions from Mr. Hunt? Comments? The petition, um how many people was it, five?
It's four eighty-nine online, and I have sixty plus on paper. And I just wanna say, should we not uh get what number one was used as a correction not to do it the last time? And then here, obviously, no one has questions, no one most likely is gonna make a motion to change the meeting back to five thirty. Uh thirty percent. Thirty percent is what is is needed to recall each one of you. Uh we have the people, we have the information, and we are prepared to move forward. But what we would like to do is to uh create some cohesion between the people who ask for our votes. And the people that you all are serving, and so I won't divulge anymore because I know that I'll I'll go deeper. And uh there's a group of people who aren't actually thrilled with it, my straightforwardness, so. Commissioner Shepherd, this uh something that you requested, and here we are again, fulfilling your request. So the people just wanna know, can we have our meetings at five thirty, like they were, uh without the petition? We followed your request to do the petition, so here we are.
Alright, any questions from Mr. Hunt? Thank you, sir. Um Mr. Hunt has presented us. A request on behalf of the people, one that I can attest to, the people keep asking for whether it's. In public or on Facebook or other means, that our meeting be changed back. To the time it originally was when um the majority of us first took office. Uh no matter what when that was, I do agree with Mr. Hunt. That it should be the people's meeting, most constitutions, whether it's the national one. Um uh state one, as some language says, we the people in it, and. If we're gonna charge towards the right direction of coming together to um. Be more accountable and representing other people, um then I think. Um and and what I've been asking this commission to do is stop looking. At the person who bring things, you don't have to like. The people who bring things, cuz I spent two and a half, three years on this commission, people not liking me. And turning stuff down, Mr. McCarthy, you asked for a grant writer, I put it on the agenda two times for the city to empower a grant writer. Or what have you, and so I know the needs of this community, or what have you, and that's a big need if we wanna move forward. Um but a lot of things was done in spite of and politically driven. Where our customers are supposed to rise above that, I don't need to like you to agree with, I'd be an ideal. Uh and that takes a certain level of maturity, um that a lot of people um would claim that even I don't have. Because I get upset sometimes, but it's okay, because that's passion, but. The people have asked for a meeting which they can attend um for a while now. And if we wanna move in a direction of cohesion on this body. And also in a way of um showing the people that we listen to them for once, or twice. Um I think that'd be a good motion to make, to get our meetings back to that, and I understand. The um. Um this, the spoken benefits of moving it to nine wasn't. The reason why the meeting was moved to nine, or what have you, um. And 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 so, you know, I've heard that, well, it's the employees and everything, and they have to stay later. Sometimes that comes with the job and the inestance that can be adjusted on the other end, and I worked a lot of jobs for the state. Where we got time adjusted moving over, uh that didn't necessarily go into overtime. Um there were some adjustments made, especially if you're talking about department heads. Um and so, um my thing is if we wanna get it right, I think that'd be a good gesture. So at this time, do we have a motion to change the meetings back to five thirty?
Mr. Chairman, before you make the motion, um as I stated in the past, and I stated last minute, I don't have a problem. With meeting being at five thirty is what we agreed upon, I'm fine with that, um I think that um. If we're going to do that, then um if we're gonna move forward on that, then that's that's fine. Uh but I've never not been opposed to meeting being at that time, as I stated before. Um it was just that when we came up, that was what we went with based on what was presented at that time, so. Uh I want to be clear on that fact, as I've spoken to others who talked to me about changing it. Uh as I stated to them then, and I stated in the meeting before, and I stated now, uh the five thirty meeting time. Um was fine with me, uh with the understanding that um if it was gonna benefit the people. So I wanna be clear on that, uh that being said, I don't have a problem making a motion at this time for us to change our meeting.
Will you make it for me?
I'll make a formal motion that we.
Chairman, it requires an ordinance to change the meeting times.
Oh, but he can make the motion, uh yeah, but we. Right, right, but I I I need you to let him make the motion, you can do that while we discuss if it be a second. Alright, could you make your uh motion?
I made a motion, I'm just um um change our meeting times back, or change our meeting times to um six PM. Uh as our regular meeting time.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have no second. So I'll motion die for like a second, and. I am gonna go back to where I used to be. And I've tried to be above this, when the people ask for something. That better help them out, the better for them, the better be engaged, you grant that. But the problem we have in the city of Cordial, we'll let people because we like them. And they may show up to a for funerals and deliver some food, or what have you. But if they're not doing their, your bidding here, that's an issue, or what have you. We have a problem in the city of Cordial, where people that look a certain way are propped up by people that don't look like them. And what we find time and time again, it does their bidding. Those people do their bidding, and at the end of the day. When we're sitting up here and our task will put before a person, Mr. Hunt, I wouldn't even did petition, but you did. Because it wasn't a petition to change it in the first place, it would change for petty politics. Because what we're saying, too many people is coming up here and supporting when I was passing. And Commissioner Shepherd has constantly not act done what the people ask, I expect Commissioner Rain not to do it. Because he serves a different block, a different interest, and that's just how politics cut. I don't have no big issue with that, you know, you have to answer to your people, his people are a little bit different, they have different interests. Or what have you, but on the other side of the town. What we have seen is a disrespect of what the people ask for. Um over the weekend, I went back looking through some notes and looking through some things. And one of the things I came up when I asked for a particular something from this committee. Commissioner Shepherd, two friends stood up and said, let's do it, she didn't do it. And it is ridiculous, and that's why I warn people about this. This this relationship that the city of Cordial have with a let official, it's kinda like a abusive relationship, I worked in the domestic violence shelter. It is that, they don't do what you ask, and abuse you and abuse their power, but you keep running back to them. For what? For what? The two commissioners on the west side have been in their seats for over ten years, why has they declined? For what? I didn't have to like Barti, I don't have to like Commissioner Rain, but they got things done for their wars. And 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 we as certain folks that look a certain way, we gotta get beyond symbolism. Don't care if you black, if you're not doing what the people ask, you need to be gone, you need to vote them out. Symbolism represented something when this place was in a different place. If we can get one of us, that's okay, because we understand it take more than one vote, but we beyond that now. You don't have to have nobody just because they look like you. That person need to be doing the bidding that you asked them to do, it's not my conviction that I sit up here and lead with. This anger is not mine, my dad say all the time when he watching me, how come you get angry and upset then the next person you laughing and joking with them? Because it ain't just about me, and the next person that comes up here, it ain't about them, I don't have an issue with them. I'm not gonna carry an attitude or negative perspective. This is the conviction of the people, the people put us here to have their convictions charged. Not our own. If it's ethical and it's legal and possible, we should do it. And this thing is ethical, legal, impossible. Or feasible, whichever word you wanna use. But the audacity to sit up in the people's seat, and time and time again. Time and time again, won't even make a motion to discuss. A second to discuss the way out, the pros and cons of it. And and this is no disrespect to the department heads, and I hope y'all don't take it that way. As elected officials, we have to balance all constituency and do what they ask you to do, it's not even disrespect to y'all. I thank y'all for showing up, working hard every day, I appreciate that. But we are representing other people, and sometimes we have to act accordingly to them and not doing just selection here. I don't want y'all to be here any extra time, but on the balancing side, I also don't want. Our people being there to miss meetings, when the meetings were changed simply out of petty politics. It's a damn right change. But what I would say to the people, you here, you 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 can go minute by minute. When we open this meeting, we'll prove the minute meetings, you can go on the website and look at every vote. That has been cast or not been cast. It's in black and white, what your elected official has and has not done. No sir, this is a, it can't speak, um so I got the rules, it's it's not a public error. It has been in black and white, I told you in twenty twenty-three. It showed up here today. And this is why one group cannot get ahead. It blows my mind, it blows my mind. That someone would have the audacity to spit in the face of the people that they represent. Cuz that's what it is, it's metaphorically spinning in the people's face. That put you in this seat. That petition just didn't come. From Ward Two, even though it didn't even have to be done. What I'm asking the people to do is start to understand what you're supposed to do in a democratic society. It's to hold your elected officials accountable, and if they're not doing your bidding, you have several options, election is one of them. Goes for me too. Try recalling me, it didn't work, and it's not. But what's interesting, for the things that wanna be done. Even the orders that uh Mr. Hunt talks about, changing the. Um where we have a vacancy, so to speak, that we can make a temporarily, a temporary appointment. When it was first brought up, I heard Commissioner Shepherd jump up and say, hey, we should do this. Because the governor don't know that about we go down here. He supposed to have a call meeting, I I'm in council, so parents start mattering, behavior start mattering. I figured after the first day when nobody said they can come, we wasn't gonna have it, that somebody had actually got the Commissioner Shepherd and told her not to do it. Yet, we have a retreat with the county, but I was told people didn't have a schedule in the time. To meet, to take care of city business, but if we wanna give owners, I wanna give contracts to people when it's been denied they can meet. At at when it was, came time to pay for my legal fees, and then I didn't jump when Commissioner Reeves asked me to jump to do something. They can meet and reverse that decision. This commission has almost been the ruthless do nothing commission I ever seen. It's hardly ever that people look like us, the three of us down here to make it blunt. That ever have a power and authority to make some changes for people that also have been oppressed and look like us. That don't happen in many places, because of the population, and it's not about racism or discrimination or reverse discrimination. What it's about is equity and equality, meaning right and wrongs, you can look at this community and tell. The impacts that redlining has had on it, the impacts that racism still to this day has had on this community. I just left a conference in DC where they talk about these issues on the local level, proceeds. Where cities are actively doing things to reverse the damages of redlining, racism, oppression. It is ridiculous. But see, that that's when you have a white supremacy philosophy, you don't have to look a certain way, Niket Rock racism or white supremacy philosophy. And once they put it here, they tell you, oh, we can't do that, that's not the role of government. That's the biggest malarkey I ever heard. The role of government is to serve the people liberally, ethically, and feasibly, as we can. Physically too, if we have money, but that's what I mean by possible. Physically too, if we have money, but that's what I mean by possibly. And to metaphorically spit in the face of the people time and time again is a shame. But I'm I'm put. The onus back on the people who elected Commissioner Shepherd in twenty twenty three. Because that's where it belongs. I'm gonna put the responsibility back on them. The calls I get to do something about your problem. When you have tired and handicapped me. Where this commission with Commissioner Shepherd and Commissioner Reed had took the first real. Chairman for the people. Because the one before was a puppet. The first real chairman that looked like me. And saw through. The charter authorities. Went along with changing the former government. Didn't need a petition for that either. And you will think after changing the whole makeup and setup of our city government. You'll think you want the pains of the people for something of that magnitude. They didn't do that. They did it with three votes. As Commissioner Reeves always said, takes three votes. That's all it they did, three votes. But to lie or be ignorant to say that it's taking petition to change time. I've tried to work with each person up here. Ask Commissioner Shepherd, who says she already bring her for help, but the help gets her to a back from from the GMA all the time. I don't care if you don't like me. Mr. Hunt don't care if they don't like you. You don't supposed to have a peaceful relationship with people who will keep denying your needs and your requests. When they're reasonable. Everybody will come up here and make reasonable requests. This is outright ridiculous. Something as simple as changing the time back when the people have spoke. You it it seems a game, Mr. Hunt, that like I said, I don't play them games. But it was a game that was played with you, the pull of barrier, and 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 I admire your persistency. You bulldozed that barrier, that the barrier. You bulldoze. Even though it was put in front of you for no good reason. Because they didn't take it. Yes, ma'am. You you may not really want to do this. I'm letting you know, you may not, you may just want to. No, ma'am, they're not against you personally. That I no, I said Commissioner Shepherd. And 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 wait, no, no, and no. When I said Commissioner Shepherd, Commissioner Shepherd is not necessarily a shepherd. I don't like you personally. We're both social workers. No, 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 I'm speaking right now. Com- Commissioner Shepherd, cause man opportunity to speak when Mr. Hunt asked it, we have a question, but you did not. So at the end of the day. When I talk about Commissioner Shepherd, I admire the work you done. That's why I asked for you to take vice chair. That's why I asked you to do the healthy agency center for the people. When I learned. That black people died ten years earlier in this community than other people, especially the black males. I asked you to do that because of your background. I personally like you. But I'm not personally Josh Darasoe here, I'm Chairman Darasoe, and you're Commissioner Shepherd up here. So I didn't attack you personally. I wanted to say for these people getting into squabbles with the family and everything, when you take these seats. The first thing I told my family have pit scheme. Because when you 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 attack Chairman Darasoe, that's okay. Chairman Darasoe will attack back. But I don't take it as a personal attack unless you coming from my freedom line. But at the end of the day, I have spoken no lies here. Again, there ain't a minute meetings, black and white. You go on the website. So it's not personal. It is in your capacity as a elected official. So don't, don't get it twisted because I don't personally have time to attack anybody. My heart don't mean that way. Go ahead.
I was, I am shepherd from War One. There are several things I've done to improve War One to my best of my ability. Included taking the peanut jam out on Tenth Street North. I worked on cloud surveys for sewer services and lighting. Anything the citizens would ask for, I was trying to get that gin on Sixth Avenue. And eleven street down from the last since twenty sixteen, I haven't had any support or backup really. Oh, yes, I do anything I can to help the citizens for you. Now, as far as the petition for a change to me. When I was in a petition, it was for the change of the mayor or form of government, we was talking at that time. I don't know if you're online voting for eighty nine four, so for all business, I have for the other which. I wish that I follow this online. And if fifty plus people, it had right, I I mean. If you want to come to the meeting, it's it's okay. I mean, I really appreciate you coming to the meeting. But but sir, the meeting is televised. And if you got a little gun, they just you come put your fire in saying, come on in. I'm kidding myself. I am not opposed to the improvement of War Two. I can go in to the change. But I I can't as a person and as commissioner of War One. If you come to me and say this is War One, I'm doing it wrong, then come to me and say, I'm talking, just sort of accuse me as your commissioner. I'm not Mr. Shepherd, you know, I mean, it's okay. It's okay because I don't live all right. I know who I am, whose I am, and that's all that matters to me. I'm not angry with anyone, just get it straight. I'm not angry with anyone. Sometimes I go and look at the video, I set up to where I'm with. So I mean, if you think. That I'll set up to you. I don't, I don't campaign this year. I don't campaign off at the city meeting. I campaign out there with with other commissions or 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 chairman or vote, I campaign, I just mean, I just take it as mine. I move forward. I don't throw bar. I don't do drama. I I I love people. Oh, yes, I work in the churches. I work at the marriages. I volunteer. But as your commissioner, I try to give the best of me to everyone in Cordia, and that is my war. I agree with something Chairman Shepherd, I don't hear nothing everybody say. I don't trust nobody from Twitter. From the city, um. Attorney, Mr. Ring, Mr. Darasoe. Mr. Lord, all the time that I trust is best to be a sheriff. And with that being said, I vote my conviction every time I vote for what I did is best for the city. What I did is best for Cordia. I don't see this as black Cordia or white Cordia. I see it as Cordia, Georgia. So if I'm wrong with Senator Darrell. I desire and you to forgive me. That is my statement.
Commissioner, first of all, you are so misinformed because that is not what the petition was for. You as Mr. Hunt, uh, you said you need a petition to change the time.
No.
I'm talking now. I did not interrupt you. I said, I am talking. I did not interrupt you. That means you need to be quiet while I talk, like I stopped here in patience and discipline and not interrupt at you. That's the way it works. It was hard not to do it, but I I was disciplined enough not to. You put that challenge on Mr. Hunt. We wasn't talking about the government time. And again, even if that was the case, you didn't have a petition to change it. To that large system. Why in your right mind, do you think you need a petition to change it back? I I'm talking. I'm talking. As far as the lighting, I talked to the people in your ward. And 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 let's be honest, since we want to claim everything we done, if it went for the city manager. We still would have been stuck in the hole of getting a community block grant going in previous years. Because it was her that came in and said, this is what we need to do to get this job done so we can apply for other community block grants. You s- when you see the gap of being able to apply because. You couldn't convince your people to go ahead and get their sewage done. The junior thing, thanks to Mr. Hill here, made more progress than you made since two thousand sixteen. And that's why you hired good people to get jobs done. But at the end of the day, to take credit for what other folks have done, that's not the thing. You you say you don't trust anybody, but yet you seeing the most corrupt. Commit the felony, it's the smartest person up here, but and you vote with them all the time. So to say that you don't trust anybody up here, your voter record says differently. I don't see this as black or white Cordia, but I see this as a Cordia where the black side of town was torn down because people like you and Commissioner. Reed started having paid three or four hundred dollars for dinner and lunches while not getting anything done in your ward. But taking the people money. Going on trips, swiping cars. So at the end of the day, you don't have to see it black or white Cordia, and I'd rather not see it that way either. But Cordia is like a person with a broken leg until the west side get repaired, we cannot walk toward progress at a good speed. So you don't have to see it, but you have to have your eyes open, and it really goes against the creed of social work to not advocate for oppressed people. That's the creed of social work, to empower and advocate for the oppressed. I don't want to sit up here and talk about black and white every day, but I didn't make it this way. History made it this way. People that sat in these seats made it that way. And I don't want to talk what I believe is the truth. And what you just said, you don't vote the convictions of you. You vote the convictions of the people who put you here. Otherwise, what you just said and bit both of them, I am mute. To the concerns and issues of the people. I don't care what you say, I am going to vote the way I think is best. It's a collective fault. It's a collective fault. So at the end of the day, when people speak and people say something and you sit up here and go otherwise. That is saying I am mute. I'm turned down to the oppression, to the concerns of the people, and I'm going to do what I want to do. That is one of the dumbest statements I ever heard, keep saying I'm going to vote my conviction. Vote my conviction, and that one vote had been powerful because it rained and reezed the hell out of one vote, this commission wouldn't be in the place it was in. So your vote is powerful when you add two plus one equals three to get anything done. So one vote is not insignificant. So to sit up here and say I have one vote and you don't trust people, that is a lie. And speaking of campaign. Your campaign, in theory, so we are of science. Yet you embraced them when they came back. Then make a statement and said, I don't condone theft or stealing. You embrace them and thank them after your election. Thank you for all you had, Commissioner Reeves. What we as a people got to do is stop trusting. A wolf in sheep clothing. Because they put on a pretty smile and they dress up. Get our affection. Because that's what this is. Both of them. Both of them have been a wolf in sheep clothing. And to sit up here and spout what you've done. Taking credit for other people. It don't take. Nine years to get a genie torn down or something. The power in my domain is powerful. There's compelling things that the city can leverage to make people do things. If you have a problem with it, enforce code. Out of ten years of going to GMA training and being a a high ranking official in GMA, you should know that. You can have the things with zoning and code when people are not acting right. I was just three years in. And when I freshed out up here, and he went to retreat in Columbus, and I walked out the room because I had I had one simple request for the guy. When he ran up and then stopped me because I couldn't sit and listen to the lies y'all was telling, he said, but they don't know like you know. And that's what I thought coming in until I started going to the trainees. Those trainees have more education in the than my degree in theory. Cause y'all get practical education to really learn how to do this. I understand the underpinnings of it and why you should do it, one way versus the other. But those trainees are the practical solutions to a lot of what we have going on. And it's not enough to eat and be fat cats on the city dime to go there. It's outright spit in the face of the people who put you in your seat. And we won't even get, and 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 we want to talk personally. We can, we can talk personally, but I'm not going to waste more time getting into personal things you have done. Or what have you, that goes beyond us in these seats against me. Banning with people. Racist. That lie on me. The audacity to sit up there and neglect the people wishes.
It's time we were going to department head reports. Community advancement, Mr. Hill, how you doing this morning?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. So for the, uh. Community advancement, uh, department, I attended the, uh, Pail meeting on R six. Where we did a recap of our reports to, um, move this project along. Um, I was asked by city manager to conduct the C D G engineering, uh, meeting with Carter and Sloop. That went well for, um, the infrastructure. We have surveys that we are, um, conducting right now and. Hopefully we'll have everything in place to submit for that, uh, grant in time. Uh, I had an opportunity to sit in on the, um. Interview panel for a person for the community development department. I attended the land bank meeting on March eleventh to discuss some, uh, housing initiative effort efforts. Uh, attended a meeting, uh, DCA home art webinar on the twelfth for support of housing. Uh, and discussed potential grant opportunities for non congregant shelters and wraparound services. I then had a meeting the same day, um, to discuss, uh, E S G grants. Uh, with the, uh, Chris Community Council in Southwest Georgia. Uh, we're looking at trying to, uh, collectively go after that grant and, uh. See how we can help homeless, uh, population here, or people that become homeless, uh, the current and people that have potential to be homeless. Attended on March thirteenth, the faith based initiative meeting that went very well. And. Lastly, for. The community advancement, I attended the, uh, Georgia Land Bank Authority Conference Call that we have monthly. Uh, I am, I have asked again to be on the, uh, intergovernmental committee. And, uh, look forward to being able to work with legislature to, uh, advance initiatives for Cordia. For community development. We have a restore preservation commission need, uh, committee meeting, um, March nineteenth at six PM. Uh, won't get into the details. We, uh, have no board of zoning appeals committee meeting this month. We do have a planning commission meeting on March twentieth at ten AM. This is, uh, for the orchard, uh, rezoning. From R seven point five S to, uh, P E. Uh, which is planned development. Revolving loan fund, we don't have a current meeting scheduled. The committee is down one member, so, um, we're gonna, um. Uh, we need to get a recommendation for a committee member so that we have a score for that and then we can proceed with meetings.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Thank you, Mr. Hill. Give more to Ms. Alazan, are you bored?
How's everyone doing? I would just like to, um, point out the increase in business license fees for the month of February. And also for property taxes, we were over a million dollars for that month. And the deadline for property taxes had passed. It was March sixth, February. So the deadline has passed, so penalties and fees will be added at this point. That's all I have.
Hey, any questions for uh finance? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Goals and accomplishments, our goals is always provide the best possible service to the citizens and visitors of Cordial. Through firefighter recruitment and retention, professionalism, extensive training, quick response, fake of emergency mitigation. Community risk reduction programs and community engagement. Accomplishments, we hosted a multi company training at our fire training grounds with uh Chris County Fire Rescue. We did live fire, firefighter CPR, firefighter survival and fire ground rescue methods. Which is important because we're now running structured fire calls together in the city. Um we will be hosting a railroad safety class next week at Albany State, that'll be Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. Uh I attended a pre construction meeting for the new E V charging station. Attended the safe driving summit at Chris County High School that was hosted by the Lutzy forty-three organization. Attended a public safety roundtable at E O C, attended a safety committee meeting on three twelve. Uh we will be at the Chris pre K transportation day later this month. We're doing hose testing this month and we're also doing CPR A D first aid research for our firefighters this month. That's all I have.
Any questions for our fire chief?
Yes, just one, did I hear the city and the county are both running on all structure fires? Is that in the city and in the county?
No.
Just, just the city?
The automatic aid agreement that was signed in twenty nineteen. County sends two trucks. Engine one or engine eleven for them and the closest second truck to all city structure fires. We send one truck to the north end of the county if there's a structure fire. In the county.
And that would help maintain the I S R rating of two?
It, it certainly helps, yes, yeah, because manpower on the structure fire scene is part of that that's figured in.
Any further questions for our fire chief? Thank you for all you're doing, sir.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, David? I'm all right.
Morning all, I have my report in your packet, just a few items uh over the past month that. That have occurred that's helped us meet some of our uh goal benchmarks.
Mr. Hill, lock that door, lock the door, everybody go around that with security measures, go ahead.
Okay, one, one of the first, we're continuing to review roles and responsibilities to ensure the current and future services uh. Service demands are met, um we're. We're continuing to update op- uh job descriptions to ensure that roles and titles accurately detailed. As an example, uh our senior accountant job description was recently modified to add payroll needs and oversight functions to that role. Um goal number two is we're we're continuing to encourage and buy leadership development by setting clear paths for advancement within the organization. As you know, we have extended the in-house promotion of our payroll technician to a senior accountant. Uh along with a promotion of a police officer to the rank of corporal. And then externally, we have hired a water and store technician, a maintenance technician and accounting clerk. Uh unfortunately, our maintenance technician does not work out, so we're uh looking for another in this time. And then lastly, uh by creating a qualified pool of candidates for all roles. Been working with our, Mr. Smart, I'm working the social media manager. Uh he's developing flyers and rap cards promoting the city of Cordial employment opportunities as we posted at some of our local colleges, tech schools. Uh and on hand for events and we're working on details to uh finalize. Hosting a work based learning student in the fleet department of public works as well as in the finance department here at City Hall. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for uh Mr. Wade? Thank you, sir. That says, Mr. Court, good morning Nancy, how you doing?
Good morning, Mr. One, um the goals for the Cordial Municipal Court. It is to report aggregate and complete information for the court and the public, to complete the court document for the judge in a timely manner. And our confidence is all doctors and court disposition will come into this state on time.
Still going okay? Thank you so much. Thank you, Ness. Good morning, sir. Good, good.
Good, I'll start with animal control, actually, if you don't mind. Uh goals and accomplishments for the division is uh first one is to get more animals rescued and adopted by being more uh active in the community and on social media. I can say animal control division does, in my opinion, a great job um on social media, um always posting animals and trying to get awareness out. Um their efforts, they had sixty-three animal adoptions and rescues or replains uh last month. So I think that's a very good number based on previous months, so I'm very proud of their efforts there. We also have a volunteer that also will be helping out with social media as far as uh keeping things up to date and um graphics and just just being more aware. Number two, working towards implementing volunteer program, obviously the volunteer for social media falls under that. Um but we're also working on a schedule and paperwork, kind of how things will be run as far as potential volunteers while they're at the shelter. Uh that'd be a great help and it'd also bring awareness, I believe, too, so we're working on that. Uh number three is make shelter improvements. Um currently, there's going to be a uh play yard for the dogs to exercise and for adoptions or potential prospective adopters. People who want to adopt animals to meet the dogs and or cats. Um so they can kind of meet with them and play with them before they decide to adopt, uh that has been put down and and is now active. Number four, actively promote better animal welfare and spay, neuter, vaccinations, things like that. Um we try to help out the community and have loaned uh several dog houses to civilians. Uh we had made mention of this previously and changed our policy, we now keep track of everything that is loaned out. And uh so we have, uh it's usually loaned out on a thirty day basis, if there needs to be extensions or things like that, um we'll be we handle it on a case by case basis. But we do have tracking now uh for all of that. Uh we're still increasing in our numbers, we, one good thing is people are actually contacting us now about how to get their dogs spayed, neutered and vaccinations and so that's a, that's a great thing. Uh number five, we'd like to host more events uh as far as from animal control. We are participating, animal shelter is participating in the transportation day uh at the pre K. Also working on possibly having an adoption event at the shelter on a weekend or day. Uh where people can come and eat dogs and cats and then just have an adoption type of uh event. That's all I have for animal control.
Thank you, sir, any questions for animal control?
All right, there's no questions for animal control, we'll move to codes. Um goals and accomplishments for the codes division, number one, uh the codes division will continue code enforcement efforts to increase code compliance in all wards. Uh as I alluded or said stated last month, we're having uh noticing an increase in issues with trash piles where people are tenants are moving out. Uh we are actively addressing those issues, um and we have issued some violations in response to that. I also encourage the public, if they see things, to just let us know, you know, we have um code compliance officers that are actively out there. However, if you notice something and um just to let us know and bring awareness to us so that way we can handle it. Uh number two, as far as the goals, uh the code division will continue sending codes officials to advanced training. Um a couple of weeks ago, the codes compliance officers, the the entire division actually attended the gays conference. Um and they were interacting uh in different sessions, um sharing ideas and knowledge. Um currently, officers when and who are preparing to take the property uh maintenance test. We've ordered all the testing materials and they're studying for that and they'll be taking that test very soon, we wish them well on that for sure. Uh number three goal, address blighted commercial and residential properties through education, code enforcement, private funding, grants, opportunities. What we've done on that is code compliance officers have asked um to submit five more blighted properties to city attorney uh for action and we've done so. So we are working uh with the attorney's office um to get those addressed. And then number four, increase our social media presence, we'd like to increase it on all of our divisions. And um we are attempting to increase our presence there. Code compliance met with county planner and building inspector and they reviewed new business expansion possibilities, so. Again, we're trying to do positive things in the community through our codes division, that's all I have for codes.
Any questions for codes?
I'm sorry, the the bad part is is not changed, I usually will make references, something has changed, nothing has changed, but it is there.
Yes.
In reference to um. Codes with 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 trash pile. If the individuals live in a apartment type setting. Uh and the trash is put at the dumpster that's there. Whose responsibility is that to have it moved? Now, and the reason I'm asking that question largely in part is because in one particular area, there's been a bunch of of. Trash household and one and in one case, the. Person was, I'll say evicted, they left and the complex had someone come in and they just piled everything. At the dumpster and what happened was the people that the residents that are there were normally dumped their trash there couldn't get to the. Dumpster itself, so it just turned into a big.
Thank you, Commissioner Owens, I think that's a great question, I'm actually glad you brought that up. Uh what we've been experiencing is issues with housing authority property, I don't know if that's what you're referring to. But that was some of the issues that have come up as far as trash and who would be responsible, would codes be responsible, would the housing authority be responsible? Our codes division is uh working on meeting with the housing authority to see how we can assist them in handling that. But what would normally happen is the housing authority property, they it would fall on them and then codes would deal with the housing authority, that's normally how it would happen. Um like I said, we're we're actually in talks and as soon as yesterday or as last as yesterday, uh with the housing authority on how we can work together to alleviate those issues. Because we are noticing, uh there are several properties where that that happens, so, yes.
And I think that maybe the suggestion might be even, I know housing authority is one, but any of those apartment complexes because it's happening all over. And I think that uh, I think one of the biggest problems that they have though on trash pickup day with the people picking up trash, they're. They pick up certain things and not pick up, so the people will bring the trash to try it. Just say the dumpster is here, the trash pile is all over here and nobody's getting picked, nothing's getting picked up.
Right, and that's the thing, um on one of the goals where where I stated that we have worked or excuse me, issued violations or citations in response to the tenants moving out. So that's some of the efforts when you with what you're talking about is we have, last month, I want to say I reported that, you know, we've had the issue, we've identified the issue. We spoke with different landlords as far as how the proper procedures this month or going into this month, last month. We've actually issued some type citations after our initial, you know, education efforts. Oh, no problem, it's a great question, thank you for for asking that. Um if there's no more questions on codes, I'll talk about the police department and our goals. Uh goals and accomplishments, number one, we would continue to provide professional law enforcement services through our hiring process, training and self accountability. We currently do have one uh applicant that's currently in our hiring process and we also, not to forget, uh we do have a current one cadet in week ten of the police academy. Police academy, this is the first time they've actually expanded the amount of weeks that are there at the police academy, it was ten, I want to say now it's sixteen, so. It's a good and bad thing, they're getting better training or more training, uh it'd be less we would have to send them to after they graduated, so. Uh but obviously on the front end, it takes them a little bit longer to get through mandate, but she's doing very well and she's on week ten. Built strategies to attract more experienced officers, we actually have a female officer that will be starting on March thirty first. Uh she is certified and she comes to us with about three years of experience, so we're very excited uh that she chose Cordial to come to. Uh we've also increased uh our um efforts on Facebook and trying to advertise. Our number three goal is we would continue to uh connect to the community through community related events. And uh our event committee is at the forefront of that uh in their efforts. Um as far as some of the things we're doing, our department has been invited to the Chris pre uh Chris County, excuse me, pre K. Uh transportation day, that's on March thirty first and we'll also be attending, we, excuse me, attended the prevent child abuse abuse Chris meeting last week. We discussed several upcoming events. When it comes to that, um by the way, child abuse prevention month is uh I want to say in April, so we'll be doing some events related to that. And then finally, as far as our goals with the police department, is we will continue to make advancements towards uh obtaining the excellence in policing certification. Again, there was some confusion last month uh with the larger goal of achieving our state certification. Uh the big part of that is policy review, we constantly reviewing policies, uh Mr. Chairman, you alluded to that last month. As far as how we're reactive with our policies, part of our, or I guess what keeps us honest in being reactive to things. Is trying to obtain those different certifications and that's something that we continue to do. It's a, it's a big undertaking, looking at every policy, um but but we are working on that, trying to one, one step at a time. So that's where I'm at, that's all I have for uh the police department, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Uh is the transportation day the twenty first or the thirty first?
I thought it was the twenty first, I have it written as the twenty first.
Okay, okay.
Um I'll double check that.
I, I think you're right, you just read something different.
Oh, did I?
Thirty first, so I just wanted to be clear.
I apologize, no, you're you're a hundred percent correct.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of you.
All right, all right, no worries, all right, thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, um, fun works.
Okay, I obviously have the uh. The whole of our, we got seven of those and we got uh more completed. And uh. The dirt itself, we got, we got hauled dirt to the land because the timing, we can't use that. And also I've got, you know, so you know. Explaining all that to help.
Yeah, there's number six on the agenda, unless the uh commissioner want to go ahead and hear the um the background or the information on this number six on the agenda.
We'll wait until the agenda number six. Sorry. No, sir, uh any more questions, Commissioner? Thank you, sir. All right, uh Mr. Smart?
Good morning all, the chairman members of the city commission, just very quickly, you have my uh report in your packet, I was hoping to be able to come to you today. And tell you that we had made uh good strides in the uh process for the website and going into training. But we are still at a place where we're waiting on the D N S numbers, but that process is uh uh still moving forward, so hopefully. Uh by the next meeting, we'll have a resolve on that. Other than that, um I will just simply say that um I have a couple of um meetings, phone calls, uh Zoom calls. Uh with uh Mr. Hill that are scheduled that I am hoping is going to bring some very exciting news to this commission. And to the city of Cordial, I'm going to tease you with that and uh and say only that for right now. But other than that, that is my report at this time unless this body has questions.
Sir, no question but I come in?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent job, your news man. I really enjoyed meeting you. I really liked. And I remember all that I've been in and stick it for the anniversary, birthday.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, any more questions for Mrs. Smart? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honesty Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right. Agent Teague, good morning, Miss Bev.
Good morning. Uh, you have my report and just a few things we've accomplished is we submitted the twenty twenty four water audit, which is required by March first. We have almost finished the water quality report, which is required by E P D, but I have one little thing I need to double check on it and then it will be released. We're gonna release it on Facebook first until we get the website problems ironed out. And the best news I have is we had a water lab, I mean, no, not a water lab, water system inspection the last week in February. And we got the report back Friday and uh we got outstanding performer.
Good.
So.
I saw an email for it, yeah.
So we get inspected every five years instead of every three. But they found no deficiencies and it was it was a really good report.
Good.
And that's about all I have unless y'all have any questions.
No, Honesty Chairman.
Would I think Debbie Wright wasn't thirty nine years with the city of Cordeal?
She might be crazy.
Thank you, Miss Debbie. All right, IT?
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Just a brief update on our process of continuous improvement for information technology. You might recall, we we looked at all the devices everywhere, all the sites, installed virus protection, did remote support access. And completed an electronic inventory. Bobby also did a physical inventory, so we can compare those down the road. Also, we had a network engineer, John Ammons, come down and he spent a few days and Bobby took him around to all the locations and met with all the departments. And he did a thorough evaluation and detail of all the network configurations. And he's done a report and we're looking at that report now and we'll do an assessment of his report and his recommendations over the next two weeks. We've also begun what I call an IT asset disposition process, which is really a surplus process. Where we're gathering all the surplus equipment from locations, desktops, laptops, uh old cell phones. And we're gonna, we we reviewed your disposition or surplus process and we'll follow that process. And you'll see all of this come back to you normally like all the other departments have when they surplus equipment. So you'll see that in the next, we've actually also established a secure location so we can do data remediation. In other words, removal of data hard drives and things of that nature. Two upcoming things we hope to do over the next two weeks are to establish a data protection and disaster recovery uh solution. And establish a ticketing or issue process for the departments and for the all the users to utilize utilize. And a support process and we'll educate everyone on that process once it's out there. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much, sir. All right. You got it. All right. We'll begin our agenda items at this time. The first thing is the proclamation. Uh, first responders well this week, March twenty fourth through the twenty eighth. Uh, do we have a motion?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
Properly moved in a second that we uh um have a proclamation uh for first responders well this week. All right. Good. Out of favor, what's for I?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Commissioner Owens, I think, is our one of our residential readers. So he'll read the proclamation. Thank you, sir. Perfect. First responders, uh, we're asking fire chief and police chief both will come. Both proclamation says something they saw. For you all, I'm. Proclamation recognized first responders well this week, March twenty fourth, twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Whereas first responders involve men and women, career and volunteer, including non-loyal dispatchers, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services. Personnel, correctional officers, members of the organizations in the public safety sector dedicate their lives protecting our communities, often for themselves in harm's way. And whereas first responders are tasked with handling dangerous and complicated situations. And whereas the demanding nature of their work does significantly impact their mental and physical health such as sleep, fitness, nutrition, fatigue, anger management, culture management stress and loss. And whereas we recognize the integral role first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice and unhesitating dedication. Now therefore, the city of Cordeal commission do hereby proclaim, March twenty fourth through twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Shall be recognized as first responders well this week in Cordeal, Chris County, Georgia. During which we encourage all first responders to prioritize their well-being and assess available resources to ensure they are fit for duty, fit for life. City Commissioner Cordeal, Chairman Joshua A. Garisso, Vice Chairman J. Wesley Rainey, Ward four, Commissioner Veselville Shepherd, Ward one, Isaac Owens, Commissioner Ward three. Thank you, General. All right, agenda item number two, consider and approve resolution for the city of Cordeal. Um, authorizing uh forty seven thousand five hundred dollars for the city funds for the purpose of the match of the community development block grant. Do we have a motion?
So, second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve um this resolution. All right, end of discussion. Saying now, we shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
And yes for me. Uh, motion carries. Agenda item number three, consider and approve a resolution authorizing um the filling of application with the Georgia Department for the community development block grant. All right, do we have a motion for agenda item number three?
So, second.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve agenda item number three in discussion. Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it is approved. Agenda item number four, consider and approve alcohol license, beer only consumption off premises. Uh, police chief reviewed it on March third. Do we have a motion?
Certainly. Sir.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve this alcohol license. All right, any um discussion? Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
All right, yes for me as well. Motion carries. Agenda item number five, consider and approve the request of this items to be listed as surplus. Do we have a motion for agenda item number five?
So, second.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve the request of items uh for surplus. All right, end of discussion. Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Shepherd, we're voting on agenda item number five. Consider and approve the request for items listed for the public works department to be declared surplus.
Yay.
All right, um, it is approved. Agenda item number, motion carries, sorry for number five. Consider and approve change order, number one, for the Aqua uh sanitary sewage rehab uh rehabilitation project. Background is to change order include pipes bursting instead of C I P P, grounding servicing instead of removing and replacing. Um, do we have a motion to consider and approve?
So, second.
It's been properly moved in second that we consider and approve is in line of number six. All right, could we have a little bit more in-depth background? Um, city manager?
Yes, Diana Jackson said to um provide additional information on the um change order number one for the Aqua project.
Okay.
Okay, this is a a update on the Aqua project. It's about sixty percent completed. Right now, they're in the process of doing some change order repairs to the main because some of the mains was not able to do the uh slip line. So they're gonna have to do pipe bursting instead of slip line. And we also got the permits for DOT home two fifty seven. And we got the permits for thirteenth avenue, thirteenth avenue and seventy five. And after this change order, can they proceed to do the other slip lining on the rest of this project?
So Jim, uh, can you explain with this project, um. Of course, it's an Aqua uh sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, but. Instead of slip lines and pipe bursting, is that expected to occur in some of the areas of this project?
Right, in some of the areas, you had to do corner repairs because the main would not stand up to do a slip line. Slip lining is where they would insert a sock inside of the pipe and put chemicals and put chemicals in it and it creates a lining. But the the main was in such bad shape, gonna have to pipe bursting. Now, pipe bursting is different. Pipe bursting is where they insert a machine and they have pipe that been uh started together and just pull a pipe. They would button down and put a hole in the pipe chute. It's it's more expensive than strip line. But on pipe bursting, meaning they have to go back and replace every service. Which which on CPI, you wouldn't have to replace the service because they'll put a robot in and they go out and cut out all the tabs. So when they, if they're gonna do a. Pipe bursting, they're really getting rid of all their other pipe and putting a hole in the pipe chute. That's what they have to do to service it back again.
Okay, so the um change order amount is uh one million two hundred thirty two thousand two hundred seventy two dollars and thirty five cents for this particular change order number.
Right.
And we won't know what go ahead.
He also said the change order, um, those numbers are gonna change because uh instead of a twelve and C I P, he's doing a tenant. But you won't see those changes till the end of this project.
And um and there is a possibility that there could be other areas where we would need to do pipe bursting instead of slip.
Yes, I think so. I think I think they're gonna probably appear on seventeen and a half alley and eighteen and a half alley, room ten to fourteen.
But again, you all won't know until you get to that location and see what's there.
Well, they don't care when they clean that line and they'll show them to us, but it's not, it's a lot of corner repairs gonna have to be done. That's why they said they won't, they was not gonna do the slip lining. They'll do the pipe bursting because sections of the pipe, when they came with it, they kinda offset. So if they came in and tried to step mine it, it just wouldn't work. So they gotta insert a hole in the pipe down. And they can do that without digging. They go from manhole to manhole.
Any other discussion? On this?
Chairman, in fairness to the contractor, I just don't think they would have been able to bid this or until they got into the project, some of these issues have just arisen. So I do make a motion for the change order.
Good.
We're gonna pull that back because we have to, we already had the motion to consider and approve. And I think we had this issue that somebody had pointed out to me before. Uh, we make a motion inside the motion. And uh. Number six says consider and approve, right? And that was the motion that was made. Um, so we're gonna pull that back because they have somebody uh brought that to my attention. Uh, that was done before. Um, so no need for a motion in the second. We considering and approving in the process. When we have a motion in the second, we go to discussion and we was in discussion. So, um. My only question is, and I and thank you for saying that, I agree, com- uh Commissioner Rainey. Um, is that that's a possibility with the increased costs that we may not be able to cover everything that we originally thought we would cover.
Well, because it's bid out in phases, um. It is bid out in phases due to the fact that we wanted to start with this phase and, you know, um, foreseeing that there could be some unexpected things to come like this. So initially, this phase was two million eight eighty eight, two million two eighty eight, one twenty eight ninety five. And so we have not begun phase two. So we have ten million dollars, but also the state allocated an additional one million dollars to help with contingencies and things like this. So in terms of completing phase one, we're good. Again, we were bidding in phases just because we, you know, we knew something was going to come up at some point in time. Instead of bidding the whole project and being here we are, two million dollars and then we have this and something else and not being able to cover everything that we need to do.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? We shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
All right, motion carried is approved. Thank you so much, Mr. Evans. And thank you for explaining all of that. They were informative. All right, agenda item number seven, consider and approve the engineer agreement with Carter and Sloop. Do we have a motion?
So, second.
It's been properly moved in second. All right, end of discussion?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners again, um, and I think it was at the last meeting you all, uh, uh, you know, approved a Carter and Sloop as engineers for the community development block grant project. And uh after that approval, they provided an agreement which has been uh agreed by the city attorney.
End of discussion. All of the discussion. She'll proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Rain?
Yes.
All right, motion carried is approved. All right, we had our city managers' report.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. City managers' report for March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. I would just like to start with a recap of some of the uh past activities, uh, the ribbon cutting. We have photos from the ribbon cutting at South Georgia, South Georgia Technical College, short driving pad. That was held on March sixth. And then uh photos from the ministers meeting that was held on March thirteenth. Ms. Mary Bill was the speaker and shared information on her slip program and uh it was a uh good information for. And uh it was a uh good information for the participants who attended. Uh just a few upcoming events, I won't go into detail on each one, but there are two events on March twenty second. Uh B G S Gala and a fish fry of uh for Hope for the City Scholarship Program. And then um Auburn State University, uh they are hosting a community needs assessment and focus group for uh Chris County on March twenty seventh at six P M. And as many participants as possible, uh we would like to request attend this meeting. There are some individuals who don't even know we have uh that campus here in Cordill. And so we are blessed to have two higher burning institutes, uh South Georgia Technical College and then Auburn State University. Additional upcoming events, you can see uh there's a pancake breakfast and uh a um Little Slough stepping into the Georgia Milestones Assessment Awareness Event coming up in March. And then in April, we have Autism Awareness Show on April twenty sixth. And then Pickleball for a Purpose on April nineteenth. I think uh we have um Chief, uh and Chief Elliott, are you all participating in the pickleball contest this year? Both are? Okay, well, that should be fine. And that is April nineteenth, so show up for that. And uh so the winning department will bring back a trophy, right, red and white? Okay? Oh, that's good, alright, alright, yeah, okay. Alright, so we shall see. Okay, additional upcoming events in April, on April fourth, uh city employees are encouraged for those who like to participate to wear blue uh for prevent child abuse crisp. And so uh we are working together uh with them and and again, it's for those employees who like to participate. And then um the community council, they are starting early with their S for the Bank of School Bash, as you can see, is scheduled for August seventh, second, excuse me, August second. And so uh there's a Q R code on the flyer that you can scan to obtain additional information. Upcoming meetings, there's a D D A meeting tomorrow morning, downtime development authority meeting eight thirty at Main Street Office. Keep Chris Beautiful meeting is scheduled for tomorrow as well, ten A M at the Chamber of Commerce. And then, as Maurice mentioned in his report, there's a historic preservation meeting tomorrow night, six P M here in the courtroom. The planning commission will hold a meeting on Thursday, March twentieth here in the courtroom again. It is regarding the uh zoning for the orchid located on Twentieth Avenue. Um and so there were, again, will be two public hearings, one on Thursday before the planning commission and then one before the city commission. The Community Development Block Grant Application Public Hearing will be held on Tuesday, March twenty fifth here in the courtroom at five thirty P M. River Valley is facilitating that public hearing, it was advertised in the newspaper. And again, it will be held on Tuesday, March twenty fifth at five thirty P M. In recognition of Women's History Month, I prepared a list of female employees. Uh we have employees represented uh in area department from executive, judicial, public works, fire, U C T, H R, police and the finance department, and I won't go through all the names, but uh they are on the slides and in your report. And I know all employees cannot attend the meetings, but I would like to ask our female employees who are represented at this one, if you would just please stand and be recognized. Don't be shy. And thank you all very much for all that you do for the city. Now we'll move on and just recap a couple of things on the twenty twenty four goals. One I would like to um highlight is uh the uh agreement that was approved with Live Oak to assist with collections. As of today, we have turned over uh half a million in collections to Live Oak. And I hope to have an update on the amount collected at the next meeting. So uh that's information regarding collections. And then just a few uh twenty twenty five goals and this list will continue to expand. We have had various conversations regarding improvements to Joe Wright Drive, beginning at Sixteenth Avenue to the State Farmers Market. And so uh we will start that process this year beginning with engineering uh for the project. Goal two is to present to this commission a schedule of fees. Um you all have asked for information on certain fees that uh we have. And so in doing that, we're looking at, you know, all fees and as you all approved or, you know, additional fees or fees to remain the same, we would incorporate a schedule of fees so that we all on the same page in regarding to fees assessed by the city. And we definitely need to look at uh fees in terms of those who uh demolished without a permit. Uh there's been a uptick in individuals uh uh doing demolition without a permit. And of course, we know for some properties, you have to contact public works so that they can uh, you know, cap the utilities at the site. But we have seen a a small increase in in those who are doing that. And so we wanna make sure, you know, that we address that as well. Uh goal three is in regards to the retirement benefit plan for uh commissioners as well as employees. Uh the goal this year is to uh begin having pension committee meetings again. But also uh inviting G M A to come and make a presentation regarding the plan that we have. Because uh we need to see where we are in terms of the retirement plan with other participants uh with G M A's uh plan. Regarding neighborhood sustainability, continuing to work with the city attorney's office in regards to blighted properties. As you heard Lieutenant his report, uh we have sent a list of additional properties to the city attorney's office. And on April twenty second, the first eleven blighted properties that were sent to the city attorney's office. Those properties are on the court calendar uh for April twenty second at one P M. And then, of course, we just continue the process. And so as those, as we have citizens and others who continue to call regarding blighted properties, we add the properties to the list that we have. And sometimes, you know, I see people and uh, you know, and they then or something, they will, you know, ask, hey, I reported this property, nothing is being done. And so I try to explain to them the process that we go through because it is not a short process, it is a long process. That involves eventually at some point in time um placing the the properties on the calendar, the court calendar. And sometimes at those um uh hearings, the judge sometimes will provide additional time for them to make improvements. And so we have to take all of that into consideration, so I just want residents to know that, you know, if you called and uh reported a property, it is on the list. It's just that, you know, it is time consuming. And um hopefully at the next meeting, I can um present the flow chart that was prepared by Joel uh in the city attorney's office to show the process that, you know, each property goes through. Uh and why it's important that we follow those steps so when we get to court or if we're granted a court order, then we know that we have done everything uh properly. Just reminders and and a few action items um regarding the drive through window. The drop box is available uh for checks and money orders only. We've had some people deposit cash, we asked that to not deposit cash in the drop box, again, it's for checks and money orders only. And then, of course, we will um look and see because there's been a request as, you know, how can we reopen the drive through based on now that we have the fire lanes out front and back, you know, parking. So we will uh look into the cost to reopen the window and get that information to you. Also, we need to schedule a hearing. Uh well, we have five hearings that we need to schedule for stores that sell alcohol to minors. Before we had the hearings before the meeting, which means it's it's five. I don't know if you all would like to schedule those hearings at eight or would that scheduling those at another time other than the regular, you know, before a regular meeting or in the evening? Uh but uh if you all can let me know your preference, we can get those scheduled. And then also, uh at some point in time, I would like to um schedule work session and I will send information to you regarding items that we need uh to discuss for a work session. And then I um emailed to you the R F P for solicitor and public defender, if you had time to review those. Um and would like for me to move forward and I would just, you know, need approval to move forward advertising those. And then last on, uh the list is innerdale proposal, red text on it, some doing his report. Then also, uh you have the proposal in front of you and I would like to request uh that you all consider approving uh the proposal from innerdale. And that's the items that I have there. And we'll come back to the action items. And again, um the deadline for the occupation tax is April first. And after April first, a summons will be issued and fees and penalties will start to accrue at that time. And as Sammy mentioned in her report, deadline uh where the uh deadline for property taxes, uh they would be on March sixth. And so now I'm getting that interest and currency pays for that as well. And so that's all I have and I will go back to the um action items.
I think you all, the first thing that the city manager is asking or requesting for us is a hearing for for the stores that sell alcohol and the underage or minors. So uh you all need to check your calendars. How soon?
I mean, I know we need to go ahead and do it by Sunday we have.
If you need time to, you know, uh go back, look at your calendars because I know I keep a paper calendar as well. So if you need time to do that, if I I could just ask if you all could let me know by um, you know, the end of today because I I would like to go ahead and and send a letter.
Could you send us an email with times and then we'll get back with you.
Okay, I can do that. So before the meeting or a separate meeting that where I can look at dates, we do have five, so. Yeah, if this before meeting, I mean, yeah, we, unless we, you know, just advertise or or state that a regular meeting will start after the public hearings, we can do that.
You can have them in, in, matter of fact, that's generally what I've done, you have them in the meeting and uh with other places.
Okay.
Could we divide, divide like two and three and do it over uh next two meetings, start them at nine o'clock and here two and then here three?
It's up to how you all would like to move forward.
Basically, there's five cases, so here, start a meeting at the normal time and divide it over the next two meetings. Or either have one law meeting, I'm fine with a law meeting too.
Yeah, I just think that with that, we would probably go ahead and do a law at one time.
You can find that?
Yeah.
We probably have to give them about ten days to two weeks notice.
Right, so the
You know, so they can prepare if they have anything.
Right, the earliest would be April fourth because, you know, at least ten days, you know. I mean, I think the tenth day will be March twenty seventh or, but if you all are looking at holding the hearings uh on a regular meeting day, then April fourth would be sufficient because I have them prepared, I just need to drop in the date.
April fourth is a Friday, you mean April first?
I mean, April second, the first meeting. April first, that's right, April Tuesday, April first. That's right, I remember it now. If you all are fine with that, um.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, April first. Thank you.
Alright, then work session, and you say you'll reach back out with us?
Yes, I because there are at least three things that I know uh that we need to discuss in detail. And so I will send those topics out to you as well as proposed dates.
Alright, R F P uh for solicitor. I did have one question, I emailed. Is our court first, I mean, I thought, how many times?
Second and fourth Tuesday.
So on R F P, that's a mistake.
Okay.
It says, I believe, second and third, I sent the email.
Okay.
But yeah, so that needs to be correct. Cause I was like, no, we're here on third Tuesday, so. I was like, unless we had, even in court, like I I, yeah, so that's what I sent back an email. So right now, they say, and I think it's the public defender one, I don't think the solicitor one specifies, if I'm being absolutely correct, um but the
Second and fourth Tuesday.
Right now, it says the second and third. And I I knew it wasn't the third.
No, right.
Right, but uh yeah, so, but I think other than that, it it looked great.
So I just wanna make sure it's okay to move forward with advertising those once I make the corrections.
Yes, um you all make a motion uh once the correction is made. You go ahead and see the manager move forward.
Make a motion at city manager before with the R F P for the solicitor public defender, once necessary corrections are made.
It's been properly moved a second that we'll go ahead with R F P for city solicitor and public defender for the municipal court, once correction made. Alright, um any discussion? Saying now, Shepherd proceed to vote. Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Uh.
Yeah, yay, sorry. So, yeah, motion carries. Alright, then a last thing is innerdale proposal. Uh it's in your, it was in your package, you all took a look at it, alright.
See, if you all would like more information, break.
Oh, Mr. Break is here, alright, alright.
Chairman, permission. So what this is, is this is one of the last two items for tasks in transitioning from your previous provider, which is to establish your data protection on disaster recovery. Okay, and what will, as part of a turnkey implementation, your hardware will be installed, it will be configured. We'll do what we call a run book and we'll train Bobby on how he can do disaster recovery himself. We will test along the way and we'll do all of the configurations necessary to set that up and make it operate properly. And then the last thing we'll do is we'll verify that the data we backed up for the departments is is matches what is currently being backed up by your previous provider. And then we'll do the sign off on that, that we contain that data.
Any questions? I love that, seems fine to me.
Thank the board.
I'm making a motion. Alright, so probably move second that way myself. Approve the proposal for innerdale, alright, any further discussion? Saying now, proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Motion carried is approved. Thank you. Thank you, um. Thank you. Any questions, more questions for our city manager?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say, uh, happy International Women's Month. And I am so joy uh that we have a diversity in our department heads when it comes to gender. Um, uh, starting on the education, um, it's full of women, it's social work too. And I always admire the persistent hard worker women. I always say, you know, if you wanna keep talking about a thing, you have some man who won't step in the die, you're the one. And so, um, even that's the way my parents kinda operate there in the home. Knowing that, so I appreciate you all for everything you do uh in this capacity. Not just in the month, month of March, but every month. Thank you all for everything you, you do. All right. City attorney?
Yes, sir. To elaborate further on Maurice's, part of Maurice's presentation. Uh, we need to replace this third commission member on the revolving loan fund committee.
Oh, Devante, Mr. Hunt. You mean, what do you mean? Oh, the loan debt?
The committee member.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's Commissioner Reeves, these, of course, not here. Uh, these are at-will memberships. And so you can replace them, kind of go as you will.
But this one probably needs to be a member of the city commission, one of you. And so we'd like for you to do that. They can't function right now. Uh, we only have two members. And, and that brings me to the second portion of this, the city manager to have some discussions. And, and we've somehow, the city manager and the city attorney, before we got here, have been considered. Members of the committee. And we don't, either one of us think that's very appropriate. Uh, we are advisors, uh, and, you know, we can be there voting on that and then come in here and then have to advise you. And so we think that, that we need to restructure that somewhat. And you, if you would be thinking about two additional citizen types, would be my suggestion to go on that committee as well. But if you could, uh, if you're prepared, you could go on and, and, and appoint the cer- excuse me, the commission member today. Or if you'd like, uh, we, uh, we do have a pending application who's a little on the persistent side. Is that fair? Uh, and so, uh, uh, we would like to have that third member if we could. Ma'am, yes ma'am.
I'll wait and make a number next to four.
Okay. Let's start with the chair, yes ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have none of the chairman to take that position.
Do whatever I say.
Sir.
All right, uh, we have a motion to second and then we'll make me to the committee in the discussion. Saying now, shall proceed to vote. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Right.
All right. So that is two votes. All right.
Yeah, vote, yes.
Yeah, I, I vote for, um, my placement on the, um, for the committee. All right, so it is.
I'm sure you're not prepared on the other.
All right, um, anything else, city attorney?
No, sir.
I, I do have a question and I just want to clarify and I waited and I started to ask the police chief, but I think it'll be more appropriate. Um, to ask you.
I hope so.
Um, one of the things is that, um, is that. There seems to be a belief that if, uh, our police department, if one of the elected officials are, uh, involved in a call or something. That for our police department, it could potentially be a conflict interest. Uh, but let me be specific with Commissioner Reeves, and I think we need some guidance on that, then that he's suspended. Uh, I don't want to create the ideal that anybody is above the law. Um, so could you speak on that or to that?
That's common practice, Mr. Chairman. I think I know what you're talking about. That to, when a commissioner or employee perhaps even is involved in an incident. That another agency is asked to, um, to investigate it and determine what charges can be back. I don't think there's any law about that.
Right.
Uh, but I think that's the common practice. Uh, I was involved with that once. I remember I was, uh, uh, in shopping up in North Georgia, one of those outlet malls, and I got a call from the police chief. And from a school board and he had, uh, charged a school board member with stealing some, um, some food. And, uh, it became quite a deal, you know, and ultimately that person was acquitted. And, and the police chief in that case was kinda on the chopping block, if you will. So, uh, it, uh, it creates a very difficult situation depending on if, you know, depending on the outcome of the incident. So it, it's, it's the common practice to ask for another agency to look at something.
So if I leave out here to speak and the court or policeman pull me over, it'll be common practice for them to call the sheriff department?
I, I don't know with a, a speeding ticket that that would be, um. Uh, I, I remember when I was mayor, getting stopped one time and a little man rode up beside me and he, I rode down the road and I saw him. Turn completely white. From, uh, uh, cause he was, uh, I, I had rode through the stop sign.
Right, right.
So, uh, 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 I, I doubt that that would be, you could do that because you've got to observe the event, you know, relating to the traffic event.
Right.
So as a practicality, uh, uh, would be a practical to do.
That I think in speeding and traffic incidents. On the other hand, uh, we've had instances where, I recollection here, when there was an accident involving a city police car. And we asked the state patrol to investigate it. And so if you have time, that's okay, that's the thing to do, I think. But if you don't have a, a speeding incident like that, probably wouldn't, chances are you're not gonna get a ticket.
So if, uh, and our police is arriving to the scene and involving an elected official. And so what they need to do is to call the sheriff department, is that, and you said there's no law?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of any law that requires that.
But it's standard practice.
A common practice. I think it could be the sheriff, uh, it could be the G B I. And, uh, so I understand this. Sometimes, um, when elected officials involved, getting another elected official involved, uh, is problematic. Uh, but, uh, but it, it could be the sheriff, yes, the G B I.
Okay. And I think I have one more thing that I can't think about at this moment.
I'll look and see if there is any law about that. Jalen, do you know, do you, I don't think there is, it's just a practice. Yeah, perception of a, of conflict. If you don't make a charge, if somebody criticizes you, you do make a charge, you get criticized too.
Yeah, it's a hard job. It's a hard mill to be in. Uh, during the suspension though, is my thing. Because that's the hard part, right? Uh, but what I don't want to give is the appearance that anybody is above the law.
Sure.
Um. Because based on the recent incident, the thing about it is whether or not, um. Whether or not, um. It also creates, just what I said, i- i- if they're not allowed to do their job or on the call. And then that, yeah, I'm not too much of a standard type person, but I digress and move on. Um, but I just, I think that's a little iffy and I, I do understand on the other side of, of that, but I. I, I can understand why because everybody doesn't have the ability to look at something and not necessarily. Depending on who it is, but come down on a principle, black and white decision and let go of loyalty or ties. I can see that. Um. It, it, my question, when I begin to question my head, then why would our officer go out to a call involving the elected officials at all? Because at this point now, either way it goes, it can seem like the evidence. And I appreciate Chief, your, um, your report that you put out and delivering. I, I agree with most of it and I appreciate the thoroughness of it. Or what have you, um. It, it just picks, I don't know, I have to think more about it, but thank you for that.
As far as why the response began with, it did not come out as the individual was involved, it came out as.
Right, right.
Once, and you can hear it on the radio, once the officer was made aware of who was involved, that's when the termination was done.
Thank you. All right, anything else, city attorney?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
The last thing y'all like to say before, um, do we need any?
I think we do need.
All right, before we go into executive session, I'd like to say that, um. I want this commission to move forward together and we're working together. Commissioner Rainey, you have not voted, that was petty, did not vote for me to go on the committee. And as I've said since day one, y'all last meeting, when y'all was up here, I personally came to you and said I look forward to working with you. And for you to continue to be petty, I think it's hatred and I think part of the racism because you're not used to a black person. That speaks to you like an equal or what have you, not beneath you. But that's the actions that I'm talking about. That right there. Every time else when you have two votes, you usually just vote along and your reason don't make sense. But you have shown that you cannot get over the pettiness in the politics in the past. And so when people ask why can, I can't work with Rainey, that is why, because I've tried several times. And he's been pushing that and his downright hatred, just because you put on a professional look and tie. And try to pattern and lead the meeting when you feel like operating, doesn't mean that you show a lack of professionalism. Cause professionals are also involved doing the best and right thing. It's just ridiculous.
No, one, I don't.
I didn't ask for your comment.
One to qualify for that position up here.
I don't think you qualified to be here at all in your position because you only speaks to a certain group of people. And at the end of it, and the other day, you're the only one, you don't want to.
Made a payroll that also been.
That's a lie. I made payroll. This, just because you don't know everything, I, I made payroll, that's a lie. That's a lie.
Remember the vote for vice chair?
That's a lie. Yeah, because I did. I didn't.
Vote for myself and you questioned me voting for myself?
Yeah, because it, it was me. No, no, it don't work like that. No, you have been petty every time. You have been petty every time and that's what I'm talking about. So when your people ask why there's an issue between us, that is exactly why. Between you and Reeves, you have architected a lot of things and yours more than anything, his came out of game. And I get game. Yours have came out of hate and racism. That's what yours have come. Yes, it is. As a black man, I'm telling you, it's racism. You're not qualified. Didn't nobody ever tell you personally. No, your wife sat there being disruptive in the meeting and I did, well, yes, she was. I get to turn with this one. And I always get undone. First of all, calm down, calm down. Put your finger down. Put your finger down.
Loud and strong.
Put, put your finger down.
Have to respect you.
And I don't have to respect you and I don't. And, and, and see that, you're the only one who have made payroll. This man has made payroll. She's been on the department, but that is just like you to think that you the only one have made payroll. You the only one made payroll. It is simple. But that's what a white supremacy think, that I'm best qualified to do things. And that's why this is in a position that it is. No, you, you, didn't nobody ask you to nominate, but that's what you're thinking is and that's a racist thought. And it wasn't personally. If your wife out there disrupting the meeting, then I, as the chairman, have authority to say something. She sat there, she kept rolling her eyes and she kept mumbling under her breath. And I, and I gave her three or four, I gave her three, I gave her three passes. I, I think she can. I think she can. I think she can. Or what have you. So at the end of the day, that's personal. But I even told my own momma, she had to take her phone call outside and no other phone rang. I just told Mr. Hunt that he could not speak. I am fair in these meetings, whether you like it or not. Don't matter if you're related or I like you. So at the end of the day, you, you can save all that bull crap, you just hate that your boy Wiggins ain't in this seat. And at the end of the day, the people chose somebody that's gonna represent that don't look like you this time. That's your problem. That's what you have a problem the whole time accepted, the last three years. And it's all over you. The hatred and racism, see it every time. See it every time. You don't have to wear a sheet for me to know it. It's your actions and attitude. All right, this time I entertain a motion for, um, executive session.
Please personnel and litigation.
Personnel and litigation.
Motion to enter executive session to, session, uh, personnel and litigation.
All right, there's been a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
So.
All right, so we probably move to second that we go into executive session for litigation and personnel. All right, in the discussion. All right, Commissioner Owens, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
All right, I vote yeah as well, so we can go into executive session for personnel and litigation.
Okay.
All right, this time can we have a motion to come out of executive session? All right, we probably move to second that will come out of executive session at twelve fourteen. All right. Um, all in favor, that be number one, so I.
Ah.
All right, motion carries. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Uh, we probably move in second that we adjourn this meeting at twelve fifteen P M. Uh, all in favor, that be number one, so I.